I'll take her, she told me she was on her way. Uh, about four minutes ago.
She's feeling it, she's feeling it. She's down. She's down. All right, eight, six, and five, we're gonna get started with Mount Pleasant City Commission Meeting. Thanks everybody for being here, this is a wonderful crowd, it's so good to see. Called meeting to order, and if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Mike Davis to lead the pledge of allegiance and Steve to do the prayer for us, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia and to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Doris, we come to you again, thanking you for another wonderful day. It matches with, we thank you for all the great things that's going on in this city, and as we conduct business tonight, happy to be to the best interest of this city, Christ's name, and Christ's.
Amen. Thank you, y'all. All right, next we'll have roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry. Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Ms. Blankenship.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
For present.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the approval or the correction of any amendments from our prior meeting in May the 24th. Since everybody's had a chance to review, I'll entertain a motion.
I've already put them over, I'll make the motion to be as prudent as possible.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second? Second, all those in favor? Aye. Those, motion carries. All right, number five, and this is what's gonna be fun tonight, is award presentations and appointments.
Three different teams, so I'm not sure if we're gonna do it there.
Three different teams, so let's see who's on top. That's the way we'll do it. Oh, I'm sorry, we're not gonna do it that way.
We can do pictures that way in the lobby afterwards. They're all the same, those are the lobby guys.
They're all the same, okay, the first one is football team, please.
Any boys here from football team?
Who's from the football team? If you don't mind coming forward. Wow, what a good group. Y'all might just line up right down through here, guys, 'cause I know some people are gonna want some pictures. All right, whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and all its citizens are rightly proud of its young residents, and whereas the citizens recognize the Mount Pleasant Middle School Football Team as an integral part of this community, and whereas these teams have exemplified the high standards of good sportsmanship and personal conduct in their championships for the 2018-19 theme. Football Team, overall record seven and one, wow. Quad County Champions, head coach is Wesley Ducking. Wesley, you here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Peyton Holland's here, though.
Peyton Holland and John Wees, assistant coaches.
Anybody out there can take pictures?
Anybody out there'd like to have some photographs right quick?
Um...
Oh, wow, look at here! All right, look at here!
That's your drink wine, brought to trust you. That's right. Mayor, as you move on to basketball, some of the boys will continue to stand.
Okay, we'll do basketball next, then. All right, basketball team, please, gentlemen, congratulations, thank you very much for being here. All right, is that all of the basketball ready to be up? Okay, safe things, I'm not gonna ring the whole proclamation all over again. Uh-oh, another trophy, great. Dr. Green, why, thank you.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Boy Basketball Team, overall record fifteen and five. Wow. Murray County Small Schools Champion, fifteen wins were the most wins in school history in a single season. Awesome. Head coach Derek Boyd, I don't see Derek here anywhere. All right, and assistant coach Webb Williams, and I don't see Webb here anywhere.
They put together proclamation for it.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And again, gentlemen, congratulations, and let's get some photographs for these folks.
All right, basketball.
All right, thank y'all very much, and then the last, but certainly not least, is the girls softball.
Move down, girl.
That way, if you don't mind. Andre, thank you, congratulations.
I'm far gonna let Andre do it.
Okay, we're ready. Softball Team, overall record fifteen and three, Murray County Champions, awesome. Head coach Andre Baker, assistant coaches Sarah Saffler, Brandy Rochelle, and Trevor Brewer. Again, congratulations, ladies.
Ray Hill Titus.
Yay!
Yay. Again, congratulations to all of you, and welcome to a City Commission meeting.
Y'all had to stay for it. There's a test.
Great learning experience. So they're already...
Oh, I know.
Free food and best speech.
For the girls. Not for hell. My treat, girl. Seriously, go!
All right, and that's great to see. Thank y'all.
I don't know, I don't know, I should have just went.
Yeah, really, congratulations.
Thank you, thank y'all. Makes the meeting so much more fun.
Yeah, it does. All right, number six, completion of review of unfinished visits from prior meetings. Having ordinance 2019-1036, it's a public hearing and the final reading. An ordinance to amend ordinance 2018-1021, said an ordinance appropriating the revenues and expenses of operating and maintaining the maintenance function of the City of Mount Pleasant Tennessee. For the fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2018 and ending June 30th of 2019, providing an effective date, Loretta, would you like to just pitch on the highlights of that, please?
The biggest thing is that we're just, oh, doing our year-end plan.
Year-end amendment.
We do it twice a year, this is the second one of the budget year.
This is all got your, oh, the, from the other night study session, nothing changed with them.
Any questions, though? We wanna make sure that everybody's clear on, and you can't have a budget without budget amendments, so it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing, we just wanna make sure everything gets acknowledged. I know one big thing is that we've purchased the property on bond, so you know that's in here. A few other things that just kind of have planning to finish off the budget from the current fiscal year to move into the next fiscal year. A few grants, grants are in there, that kind of stuff, yeah.
For everybody's information, we close on five straight Thursday morning. So, anybody in the audience like to make any comments towards this, this is a public hearing.
Yeah.
Ladies and records, show no one I often speak, please. That being said, I'll entertain a motion.
I'm Mike Amokey, I have the ordinance number 2019-1036, and no one has to amend ordinance 2018-1021.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Those, motion carries. Motion carries. B, ordinance 2019-1037, again, this is a public hearing and final reading. An ordinance for the City of Mount Pleasant Tennessee adopting the annual budget and tax rate rule.
Yeah, I'll put it on it, that's okay, yeah.
This will be next Tuesday night at five o'clock, and I'll explain what's going on. The good news is our budget is completed and it's in great shape. It's gonna be up about a billion, billion one from the previous year, which is not all bad, revenues are up, gives us availability to do that. The issue that we had was, is we got it to the Daily Herald in time for them to do the publishing of the notice, and it did not get published. So, what we're gonna do is, since it did not get published in time, it is now published, and next Tuesday will be the appropriate time to have that meeting. Again, it will be, unless there are any questions from the audience, I think it'll be very brief, and again, I wanna remind everyone, it starts at five o'clock that day.
It's a five o'clock meeting, and I will not be here and neither will Cory.
Record.
But it should not be any issue at all, it's just a matter of state law required ten days.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I shot Kate an email today on an article I saw, and there's a community here local that is not going to be able to get it done, and it's not working. So, again, that'll be moved to next Tuesday. All right, C, ordinance 2019-1038, public hearing, again, this is a final reading for the public hearing. An ordinance to change the name of North Locust Street to Tiger Trail. What we're gonna do with that is just the road from Second Avenue to Third Avenue to Gray Lane, which is now, Locust will now be named Tiger Trail. The only address that is affected by this is the Mount Pleasant Elementary School. This was a request from the schools for us to do that in order to honor that and the kids that go to school over there, and the fact that we retired. That's right.
And Mayor, that has gone through the planning commission, it's gone through 911, and we'll make this a big event in August when the kids are back at school.
Right.
Assuming there's not a problem here with passage, but it is, it's a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this? Please let the record show no one. Twenty-two. Number seven, monthly report from the mayor, I don't really have anything other than I want...
I'm gonna make the motion.
Ooh, motion, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion that we accept ordinance 2019-1038, changing the name of North Locust to Tiger Trail.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, I wonder, I'm sorry, thinking about this, I think B, we have to move to the 25th, I mean, I think we need to vote?
To move it.
To make a motion to move it to the 25th, and special call meeting. I apologize.
We'll go back, will anybody like to make a motion to move that meeting to...
Uh, the 25th.
25th at five o'clock, please.
I'll make a motion that we move our decision of ordinance 2019-1037 to June 25th at five o'clock due to not having been published in the Daily Herald.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Monthly report from Mayor, I don't really have anything other than, again, I wanna thank all of the city employees that had any part to do with the budget, it has been, I think, a very smooth process and understanding, and we're getting better at it every year, so thanks to all the employees that had a part of that. Next is the monthly financial and budget report.
And Mayor and Commissioners, if you remember, Loretta was not here last month, so she's just gonna do like a one hour, two months.
Wait, can I have a picture of that? Okay, would you like me to read every line of the budget?
No.
Very, very summary.
Yeah.
Very great summary.
Yeah, but it's a summary for the two months ending. The cash balances are steady, the general fund remains at just over two million at the end of May, and the gas fund has a little over 3.4 million. The water account is actually above one million, one million two forty-three, so that's pretty good, 'cause that was always the one that I worry about. And the, actually, with the total cash and the deposits and the waters, including your CDs and everything, is 1.9 million, so it's, even though we do have to watch it, and water is, wastewater's are traditionally been our difficult budget, we have managed to do okay, and still fix all the leaks the best I can. We've also, for this month, we finished up the budget, and Mayor's asked me to prepare a schedule for you, that should be in your packets that you'll be getting, that actually I should've emailed you today, that would have had the comparison between the 2019 budget and then the current budget that you'll be...
Looks like this on Tuesday afternoon.
So, and it shows the change, now that, keep in mind, that is, that was assuming that the amendment passed, or this is the 2019 figures are, after all, the amendments have been made. That concludes my report, if I got any questions?
Or two fiscal years, I mean, two months, sorry, not a year, two months.
Yeah, or two month reports.
April, May, right?
Right.
All right. Any other questions for Loretta? Any motion on? Consider?
Just to talk to you about the state life early in May.
Yeah, clarification, thank you.
I'll go ahead and make the motion for the finance report from April and May of 2019.
Second, I motion.
All right, we have a first and a second, all those in favor? Aye. Close, motion carries. Let the report from City Manager.
Mayor and Commissioners, I've put it together in the State of the City that will be available July 1st online in the lobby, and we email it to a lot of people as well, so trying to get that out, and just letting you know, I already said it will not be at the special call meeting on Tuesday, actually leaving for vacation on Thursday. So, I'll be available and checking emails, but I will not be in town, so just letting you know that.
Will be that.
Mm-hmm. I know you will.
If not, we'll call you.
And I know you will.
That does not require motions, it's...
No.
All right, number 10, special reports from other city departments or committees, place for our liaison, and we had a discussion about this today, whether, and we're getting some background work done, so we need to carry this on.
You know, I remember now, and checked since I talked to you last, when I first started here, the meeting started at seven, and you had this separate meeting at 6:30, and we sat around with nothing to talk about for half an hour until 7:00. So, we've changed that, we just wanna make sure that this report stays in our schedule sometime, but I don't know that it needs to be a separate agenda item, but we will get back to you next month or next, we're doing some, but you remember that, sure, yeah. So, that's when we move them, you need to let us know. So, we'll have some feedback for you on that, next month.
Okay, good. B, Mount Pleasant Gas System Report.
Same thing.
Same. Do we need a motion on that, okay?
Yes, sir.
I think we do. New business. Resolution 2019-17, resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Community Development Corp. Each one of these wire us to do this, and our city will be giving them $25,000, we do that each year in operations.
Yes, the next four resolutions are that way, this first one that you're gonna vote on next is the Community Development Corporation, that is $25,000, yeah.
That's right. All right, I need a motion on that, please.
I'll make a motion that we approve that way.
I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2019-18, resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organization Transit Alliance of Middle Tennessee, will be doing $250 towards that. There's been some discussion about whether we need to continue that in the future, because even what they're looking at is Southern Corridor, it's not gonna affect Mount Pleasant and such. Our Transit Alliance is the transit system, which it's more worth.
For that amount of money, we're staying in on the study period, but as long as the Mayor said, I don't know.
Just see what happens. Need a motion for that, please?
I'll make the motion that we accept resolution 2019-18.
Okay, we have a motion in a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
No.
Three, one. All right. Resolution 2019-20, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Civitane Club, we are going to authorize a donation of municipal...
Our museum of seats.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The next one up, yeah.
19, resolution 2019-19, I'm getting ahead of myself, I'm sorry. A resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Murray Museum of Local History, it's up to $1,500, and what we do is we do a payment in lieu of on the gas for the building. Have a motion.
I'll make a motion for the resolution 2019-19.
Have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Resolution 2019-20, resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Civitane Club, we have offered to give them up to $10,000 for the completion of the pavilion at Harold Miles Park. The club has raised the money to build the pavilion, but once we realized that it was in, it had to be ADA accessible because it's a city-owned property and some of the things that had to happen, we're going to agree to donate up to $10,000. I can tell you that Commissioner Blankenship has done a lot of great work on this, being heart to heart, and we may wind up with a large part of that in donations from private sector. When we discussed this last Thursday night, it is, it's an excellent opportunity for our communities to come together and have public and private funding to develop everybody in the community. It's going to be a very nice part.
And Tom, please, the information and the what we needed and the passion for it to...
Those that need...
Yep, those that needed that information.
How much you see out there has already been done by private?
Already done by private, right. So, I think when we get through this, we ought all be very proud of what we've accomplished for this. So, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution 2019-20.
We have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. E, resolution 2019-21, resolution authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of the interfund capital outlay notes, series 2015, extended in 19, not to exceed $283,333.33 to the water sewer department for the natural gas system.
So, Mayor and Commissioner, this resolution reflects the loan that was allowed to be made from the gas system to pay for the sewer for landmark ceramics in the U.S.A. at the time.
Right, absolutely.
And that was done, and obviously, they have the sewer, and the plant is successful, but it is renewable every three years, and so we have to pass the resolution every three years. It was initially issued, and this will be the first, well, just the first time we have to renew it.
Renew it.
And we'll have to renew it again in three years.
Okay. Everybody understand?
Yes, sir.
All right, good, just making sure.
That's the total of nine years.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
So, that was the total, what, $2 million or whatever the total you've called?
Now, the initial, the initial, well, the total of it, it had some grants as well.
Okay.
But the total amount of the original note was 675,000, but of that, we did reimburse a grant, it was just on the initial, we initially borrowed a little bit extra from the gas to pay for those funds until we got some reimbursement back.
This is a big package, so you had a TIF, you had all kinds of things to get them here that was part of it, and this was like the last leg of it, and it says the obligation of the city.
And the TIF rolls out, I think, at the end of next year, so we'll start seeing that money coming in, it's about $400,000.
I hope so, that's great.
So, that coupled with a couple of other things, in about three years from now, we ought to be at pretty level playing field because of the debt service we actually will have on the sewer, we'll have the TIF coming in, that's not, we're not getting out, then of course, as we build more holdings and get more stuff going.
Sure, Glenn, yeah.
Sure, Glenn, everything else that's going on, we'll be able to see some. We've got a real foundation, the way I see it right now.
I agree.
So, we'll entertain a motion for that.
Make a motion, fans players, proceed.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. F, location of bike station fountain in Veterans Park.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is pretty simple, I gave you a picture on Thursday night of, this was a Murray County grant that involved Murray County, Spring Hill, Columbia, and Mount Pleasant, and we all agreed to accept a bike station, which is a water bottle pillar air station, you can repair your bike for any problems, you have, every entity got one, and ours will be here, but we never wanna put anything in a park without it going for you guys, and this will be right there at the corner where the flags are in Veterans Park and Friendly Community Center, water lines are there, the least disruption, cheapest way to put it in there, actually, there's a walking path there, it makes perfectly good sense, so that's where that will go, we just want you to kind of acknowledge that's a good location.
I couldn't agree more, I think it's great. Entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we locate the bike, bike repair water filling station at Veterans Park.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Nobody has signed, so general comments from citizens, nobody signed up. I would like to take one moment, though, and represent, and recognize Representative Scott Stoecky, for those of you that may not know, Representative Stoecky, he's in the back room. Represent anything you'd like to say, I'd be more than happy to open the floor for you for a moment.
Just basically, just come down to see great things going on down here, it's amazing what a lot of hard work can do, and very positive that you're doing down here.
Thank you very much, thank you for what you're doing, I can tell you, Representative Stoecky will answer his phone.
And he will call and tell me things that are going on that I don't even know about, so I will represent it, too.
We, thank you.
He recently called us, and then we got the retail grant, and I know that, yeah.
That communication is key, just thank you for it. All right, I don't have anything else.
The dog park opens tomorrow.
The dog park opens tomorrow.
And water day, wetting all day.
It is. Provided, everybody pray for at least a 15-minute window, it's about 3:00.
Sign off your mission, it's wetting all day when all the kids are here.
I'm at 10:01, I'm at a water day from 10:01.
Yeah, let's hope, they're saying tomorrow afternoon, that's kind of what they're saying right now, so.
I have hot hopes.
So, the dogs do not know that the park has not opened yet, because they're there all the time.
And that's right, that's what...
They don't care about the anger, right?
That's what we're for. Anything else that any of the Commissioners know that we need to bring up while we got some folks here?
I'm sorry I was late, we have full bars.
You really worked it out, right?
Again, I wanna say one more time, because, hey, there's somebody I wanna recognize. Young lady?
Let's see.
I would like to recognize your daughter. Do you mind? I got, this has been about, what, three weeks ago, I got the nicest letter in my box back there, and it was, this family I see all over town walking, and it is so neat to see a family out doing that, and Katie sent us a letter, and telling us what we needed to kind of focus on, because they're around town and they're walking up and down the sidewalks and, they need water. And Chief, I'd like for you to talk with them someday, talking about what they see when they're walking around, about people trying to run them down, even though we've got the side crosswalks and we've got the nice little things, they try to run me down, but I understand that, I get that. I get that, but this young family, no way. So, I wanted to recognize you, because I thought that letter was so nice and so candid, and we just wanted to take a moment to recognize you for that. Anything you got to say?
Besides, it's more letters, it's more.
And what did you do to your arm? What did you do to your arm?
Would you fell off a tree?
Fell out the tree. But anyway, thank you very much, we appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Katie. Thanks for going.
Yeah. Be happy to.
Katie, you're gonna make him look good.
Sure is. Thank y'all very much. We, very quietly, I'm gonna tell y'all, we're gonna do something special today, like, it was the most touching letter to.
A letter that I can't imagine that my 14-year-old writing, it's just seven.
Three pages, triple pages, if it was touching.
Future politician.
That's all I have, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.